Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'd like to call this meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order on Monday, May 17th, 2021. Thanks for joining us. We'll start our meeting as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could, please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, good evening. Thanks for joining us. To members of the council, to all the members of the public who are with us this evening. For the first time in many, many months, I'm here unmasked in the council chambers. So that's kind of an exciting advancement and change. And I think at our last meeting, we had talked about the proposed schedule to bring back in-person council meetings by the middle of July, or our second, or our first meeting in July, I think it is. I think it would be the second Monday in July. Given the recent changes and the governor's announcements last week, we're looking at moving that date up. Don't have a specific date yet, but I'm guessing it's going to be sometime in the month of June when we actually get together back here in the council chambers as a council and welcoming back the public to our council meetings as well. So very excited about that. So hopefully, I won't be sitting here by myself too much longer. Be glad to have everyone back, and we'll certainly welcome everybody back into the council chambers with me. Moving on to item three on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. And council, I've got just one change. We did have some of the license renewals that, for some reason, a technical glitch didn't make it into the packet initially. So we do have them, and I would like to add item 7.7 as the renewal of the on-sale and Sunday on-sale intoxicating liquor licenses. Make that item 7.7, and then move to 7.8, the resolution of support for the federal funding for the Interstate 494 Vision Project.
Mayor Bussey, before we take vote on that, can we do a roll call?
Ah, we missed the roll call. My apologies. I'm sorry. Ms. Christensen, could you please call the roll?
Thank you. Councilmember Beloga?
Present.
Councilmember Carter?
Asner.
Councilmember Coulter?
Present.
Councilmember Loman?
I'm here.
Councilmember Martin?
Present.
Councilmember Nelson?
Here.
Mayor Bussey?
Here. The record shows all seven members of the city council are present at the meeting, and thanks to Denise for keeping me on my toes here. I apologize for that. Now, we can move on to the approval of the agenda. And as I said, I wanted to add 7.7 and move item 7.7 to 7.8. Council, are there any additional changes or modifications to this evening's agenda? Seeing none, I would move approval of tonight's agenda with the changes as described.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second by councilmember Beloga to accept tonight's agenda with changes as described. There are no further council discussion. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye. Motion carries 7-0, and we do have an official agenda for this evening. Item four on our agenda is the public comment period, which is a 20-minute period that we have at each council meeting for folks to comment on things not on tonight's agenda. We limit callers and input to five minutes per person, and we will get to that in item 4.2, but we start with actually item 4.1, which is the city manager's response to prior meetings' public comments. Mr. Verbrugge, good evening and welcome. Do you have anything for us for item 4.1?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Good evening. If you are having trouble hearing me since I'm on a Wi-Fi with a pretty low bandwidth, just give me some hand signals and I'll maybe turn off my camera. Follow-up from two comments at the prior meeting. First, Ms. Sally Ness had a couple of questions. She had requested that we look at calls for service on a per-acre basis when looking at the impact of multifamily residential developments. And this is in response or follow-up to information that I had provided previously in response to a public comment. Not planning to do that kind of an analysis. We've never used that kind of an analysis for looking at calls for service, not going to create data that we don't have at this point. She also asked for a response to requests of a censure of the mayor based on response that the mayor provided, a previous public comment. And it's not appropriate for me to provide a response in that matter, except to say that no council member has contacted me and expressed an interest in utilizing the censure provision of the rules of procedure. We also had comment from Ms. Natalie Moros. Ms. Moros asked how many operating budgets there are. And let's bring that up real quickly. So we have 30 operating budgets that are annually approved by the city council. The city's largest fund is the general fund, and that handles the majority of operations, including police, fire, public works, community development, parks and recreation, community services, administration, legal, and finance. The 2021 budget was almost $80 million in the general fund, and around $57 million of that is funded by property taxes. There are also 12 special revenue funds. The majority of the special revenue funds do not receive property tax. They're funded by revenue such as grant revenue that can only be used for a specific purpose. The two special revenue funds that do receive property tax support are the communications fund that has $175,000 of property tax support and the fire pension fund, which has around $1 million of property tax support. There are nine enterprise funds. The four recreation facility funds, golf, ice garden, aquatics, and art center, and the solid waste fund, receive property taxes of $1.9 million. The other enterprise funds do not receive property tax dollars. Those are water, wastewater, stormwater, and police contractual overtime. There are eight internal service funds. Their revenues are internal charges to other funds. Facility fund, fleet, IT, insurance, accrued benefits, employee benefits, support services, and public safety technology and equipment. And then the debt service funds and capital funds are not included in the annual operating budget process. Instead, bond sales for debt service funds are brought separately to the city council for approval. For capital projects, the council separately approves the annual capital improvement plan, and then capital projects are individually brought to council for approval for those capital funds. Ms. Moros also asked about crime in Bloomington, and I have scheduled with Chief Hartley to have a public safety update to the community at one of the first couple of meetings in June. It's either June 7th or June 14th. I apologize being out of the office. I don't recall which one it is, but we will have an update on public safety in the community that we will do as an introductory item at an upcoming city council meeting. The last response I wanted to provide is to some resident comment that we have received about the city council proclamation and the decision to fly the thin blue flag, or thin blue line flag, as part of Police Week last week and Peace Officers Memorial Day, which was actually June 15th. This is the third year that we have flown the thin blue line flag during that week. That's a request that is made based on the flag policy that the city council has approved that has a process in place for people to request flags to be flown. The city will only do that when there is an accompanying proclamation by the mayor or the city council or a resolution acknowledging an event that coincides with the flying of the flag. And under the policy, a flag cannot be flown for more than one week. So, for example, a couple of years ago, we had flown the pride flag during the month of June, as all of June is celebrated as pride. Since we've adopted the policy, we only fly the flag, the pride flag, for one week during the month of June, and we typically do that around the celebration of pride. The police department, the Bloomington Police Department, has requested that the thin blue line flag be flown as part of the proclamation that we do annually to recognize Police Week. Let me say I do recognize and acknowledge that this year, there is much more awareness and concern about the symbolism of the thin blue line flag than there has been expressed in the previous two years that we flew it. The events of the last year have obviously caused the use of the flag by anti-democratic forces, white supremacists, how it has been utilized by them in support of their messages, and clearly, the issues surrounding policing and community relations, and especially the police killing of people, especially young black, and has become a very difficult issue. What I have committed to is working with the police chief to have a conversation around this particular flag and whether it is the most appropriate way to acknowledge Police Week in future years, recognizing that there is a significant element of our community, a significant number of people in our community that are very concerned about what that flag represents and then what it means to see it flying on a flagpole at City Hall. We do understand that concern. We're committed to having a conversation with the community about that concern. The flag has been taken down. It flew last Sunday through this past Saturday, and we will make sure that before we recognize Police Week again and consider a request for that flag, that we will have a community conversation around it and what the best way is to acknowledge our police officers, especially the police officers who have fallen in line of duty, and also recognize the really important relationship that has to exist between the police department and the community they serve, and we're committed to doing that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Verbrugge. Council questions? Councilmember Loman?
Thank you, Mayor. I know, manager, in the past, we've had, not this flag, but other flags that residents have either found from a religious standpoint to have an issue with the city flying those flags. Just curious, do we have an appeal process? How do we handle that? Is that part of the policy? I haven't seen the policy in some time now since we brought that forward, but I just wanted to just be sure that as we are, you know, as we're looking at these different challenges to the flags being risen, that we're being careful that we're treating all of our residents the same as we do that. I'm not necessarily looking for a response now, but just want to know if there's an appeal process or what do we have as a part of that policy for those residents who want to mount a protest?
Sure. Thank you for the question, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Loman, there is not an appeal process that's defined within the policy. We'll certainly follow up and provide the policy out to city council members to refresh your recollection of what exactly is in the policy. When we are, like I said, when we are considering a flag request, it has to be accompanied by a proclamation from the mayor or the city council. So it is a recommendation that comes from me after reviewing the request, and typically we do that to make, we do that review to make sure that it is consistent with the city's policies. It is recognizing something that is of an interest to the city of Bloomington operations or to the community through the policies or programs that the city supports. And then it is usually done at a council meeting, either by the mayor or the council. So there is that check at the elected officials' level that if they're uncomfortable with the recommendation that is being made, that option exists as well to question it. So we'll send that out so you have a chance to look at it to the, I don't know if it was a stated question, councilmember Loman, but with other flags, we have received concern from community members when we have flown other flags, and we recognize that we have people in the community, broad spectrum of beliefs and opinions and values, and we recognize that, you know, some symbols that we have and that we use to acknowledge members of our community are going to be viewed negatively by others. So I think that the, you know, the best way to proceed on this, like I said, on this issue or any other issue that people are uncomfortable with the decision to fly a flag is to engage our community in conversation about it. I mean, that's the reason that we have our community outreach and engagement division. It's the reason that we're trying to build relationships within our community, and I think that making sure that we have the open lines of communication so that we can have those conversations is really important.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Verbrugge, for providing that explanation. So another concern, I guess, that I have is the lack of clarity, I guess, around our proclamation process, and I think that there were some residents who felt like, or thought that the council votes on proclamations. And so I'm just wondering if, whether it's now or maybe at the next meeting in your comments, you could talk a little bit about that process and the criteria that's used to decide which proclamations will be made in meetings? And just, I just want to be clear with the public now, the council doesn't weigh in on proclamations, that they are mayoral proclamations. And so, again, just getting clear on what that criteria is and in the process for requesting proclamations if a community organization wants to do so.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, councilmember Carter, thank you. We'll also send out some information as well about the proclamations. It's in the rules of procedure. Our council secretary reviews those requests, and there's a standard there as well, but we'll make sure at the subsequent meeting, based on your request, councilmember Carter, to follow up and explain what that process is as well.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And also, a piece of clarity is just that some commissions, boards and commissions may weigh in on some proclamations and others may not. So just some clarity in that, so thank you. I appreciate that.
Council, any additional questions? If not, we will move on to item 4.2, which is our public comment period. As I said, it's a 20-minute period that we hold at each city council meeting where we allow people to call in and provide comment, up to five minutes on items not on tonight's agenda. Questions from the council will generally be clarifying only. It's not a back and forth. It's not an opportunity to dig in deep on an issue. It's an opportunity for residents to call in and express their opinion on items, as I said, not on tonight's agenda. We do limit it to five minutes to make sure that it's even for everyone, and we're always happy to get comments from members of the public. So Ms. Wilson, if we could, I think we had a few people call ahead of time and say they would like to speak on the public comment period. If you could, see if we have any folks who would like to chime in.
Erica, this is Chris. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Erica, do we have any callers that wish to speak on Agenda Item 4.2, the public comment period?
Yes, we do have Sally Ness. Would you like me to open the line?
Yes, please.
Okay. Sally Ness line is now open. Please go ahead.
Good evening, Ms. Ness. Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor, Council. Just a rough estimate for calls for service. The Indigo Apartments at 395, it sits on about four acres, so that would be about 32.5 calls for service per acre. One section was 414 parcels, and I'm giving an estimate of .25 acres is about 103.5 acres. So that would be about three calls for service per acre, and then the other was 418 parcels. Again, I'm going to estimate .25 acres for about 104.5 acres. So that would be about two calls for service per acre, and I think it's an important variable that the mayor and council should know when they're voting for high density, more density, to know the calls per service, calls for service per acre. And so asking that that be, you know, information provided in the future instead of just comparing the units to a home, and there's so many other variables, too, that no would factor in. Anyway, that's just one of them, and I wanted you guys to, here's the difference. Then Indigo is about 32.5 calls for service per acre, and then the other two are three and two calls for service per acre. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you, Ms. Ness.
Erica, do we have other callers for Agenda Item 4.2, the public comment period?
Yes, we do have Dan Erickson on the line, but he did not queue in for a public comment. Would you still like me to open up the line?
No, just as long as you've given him the instruction to press star one to be recognized. Other callers may be waiting for future agenda items that they wish to speak on.
I understand. However, there are no further questions or public comments at this time.
All right.
We have no one else on the line. Grant, if we could put the phone number up one more time and ask folks if you have public comments, if you'd like to call in, this is your opportunity. There's the phone number and the conference ID number. We will give it one more moment here.
Excuse me, everyone. Dan Erickson just queued in for a public comment.
He is. Okay. Would you please patch him through?
Dan Erickson, your line is open. Please go ahead.
Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, councilmembers and your honor. Hope everybody had a chance to enjoy the beautiful day today, although the allergies are making me a little nasally today. But as some of you know, I'm the owner of Normandale BP, and of course, due to the amendments passed recently regarding the ban on flavored tobacco and the council's position on eliminating tobacco licenses, I and many small retailers, you know, are concerned about the negative effects on our business, not just the loss of revenue, but the value of our businesses itself when it comes time to, you know, for me to retire, sell the business due to the fact that the tobacco license cannot be transferred or, you know, in some way grandfathered in the new owner would, you know, not give me this normal value for my business. I think all of us could agree that, especially you folks, should be on the council and the mayor yourself, that we want Bloomington to be the, you know, the best area in the country, you know, the leaders of the city, you hold the well-being, you know, of citizens and businesses in your hands. What has made Bloomington what it is today, I think, is, you know, your leadership vision and planning that you've shown in the past, and now it's the same fair play and for all. You know, we hope as small retailers are, you know, at the moment, trying to organize, you know, and the fact that you're giving us an opportunity to, you know, negotiate with you the future, the dear future, we're just hoping that, you know, that you continue in your legacy of fair play with us and entertain, you know, some, you know, compromises that we may come up with in the future, you know, to help lessen the impact of the decision. We're not, you know, contrary to what you're trying to implement, we're not, we're not big tobacco. We're just, you know, we're just small retailers that are just trying to make a living. And again, I want to thank all of you for taking the time and maybe, you know, consider what, you know, our position, that we want to, we want to work with the city and with you folks and, you know, hopefully come to some common ground where it's, you know, equitable and fair for everyone. And I just want to, again, thank you for your time and giving me an opportunity to talk with you folks and all those others that are listening.
Thank you, Mr. Erickson. Thank you for your comments.
You're welcome.
Erica, do we have Amber Mathwig on the line?
No, we don't have Amber Mathwig on the line.
We do not? Okay.
We do not, yes.
Do we have any additional callers on the line at this time?
Yes, we do have Cliff Carlson, and if anyone would like to do a public comment, you may press star one on your telephone keypad.
Good evening. Mr. Carlson?
Mr. Carlson did not queue in for the public comment.
Ah, all right. Do we have anyone who would still like to speak on item 4.2, our public comment period?
Mr. Mayor? He just queued in. Cliff Carlson just queued in for the public comment, and his line is now open.
Mr. Carlson? Good evening. Good evening. Welcome.
I was just wondering, last session, you said that Creekside was going to be open for senior dining. Do you know if that's going to include anything else like crafts or cards? And that's my only question.
We will provide a full update next week, I think, as to where we're headed with all of our reopenings. My understanding is that the goal is to reopen Creekside for activities, not only for dining, but for activities as well. Now, to what level and exactly what day, I can't tell you exactly, but the goal is to make sure that we get Creekside reopened for not only dining, but for all the activities, whether it's cards or crafts or woodworking, looking at a lot of different ways that we want to be able to do it safely and effectively and efficiently for our residents. So, yes, and we'll have more information and more details in the very near future. I think, like everybody else, we were caught a bit off guard by the CDC and the governor's announcement late last week, and they're scrambling a little bit to catch up, but we'll definitely have more information very soon on all those things.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Do we have any other callers on item 4.2?
Erica, any other callers on the line for Agenda Item 4.2?
They have already disconnected, but I'm seeing one more dialing in.
We can certainly wait.
Would you like to give it a minute or at least a few more seconds?
Yes, please. We will.
We'll definitely wait and see if someone's calling in for item 4.2.
Okay, thank you. One moment, please. If you would like to do a public comment, you may press star one on your telephone keypad. Again, that's star one on your telephone keypad, and we have Ms. Amber Mathwig. Your line is open.
Good evening, Ms. Mathwig.
Good evening. First of all, thank you so much, Ms. Christensen, for talking me through my brain fog and getting me on this call tonight. I wanted to call in last week to make some remarks about the raising of the thin blue line flag over City Hall. Line flag over City Hall to ask you to consider its immediate removal and assurance that it will not be raised again in the future. I understand that this is a point of contention, given that the flag has a lengthy history that many interpret as respect for law enforcement and loss of life in the line of duty. But the evolution of the flag post Ferguson, 2014, particularly in light of its rise as a symbol of right-wing authoritarianism following the election of Donald Trump in 2016, is what needs to be considered in our modern context and use. You could also consider that the Bloomington Patriots, who proudly raised multiple versions of this flag in front of City Hall in 2020, include many members that regularly support or regularly threaten and denigrate both city council members and communities of color in our city. I do not come to you without having to wrestle with the same decision as well. I'm a ten-year Navy veteran, and I spent my entire career as a military police officer. I'm deeply familiar with the culture of those who pursue policing and also with the often well-intentioned but misplaced veneration of both military and police officers. In 2012, a dear friend who was a K-9 handler was killed by an IED in Afghanistan. Soon after, I incorporated a small K-9 paw with a thin blue line into a post-Navy tattoo in honor of his memory. As I came to better understand the history of policing, and particularly as I watched the original flag design morph into something new, I became uncomfortable with my tattoo, but still wrestled with wanting to honor my friend's memory. Trying to justify its continued display on my body when the symbol means pain to so many people I care about sounded hollow and antithetical to my own core beliefs. On Election Day of 2020, I had had enough of this mental gymnastics, and I ordered a small tattoo kit. And a few days later, I covered up this thin blue line on my body as the right-wing authoritarianism that the symbol is associated with surfaced even more in the weeks leading up to January 6. As I have previously stated in public comment, we need to reconcile historical context with modern use of symbols, and it is time to retire this one permanently. I would encourage the police department to identify a more appropriate means to recognize their fallen members in the future, one that actually makes a demonstrable impact on the families and communities who have lost a loved one. I asked for a few responses that I emailed to the council and Mr. Brugge last week. Will the city remove this flag immediately? If not, will the city justify their reason for not doing so? Will the city allow this flag to be flown in the future? If yes, will the city justify their reason for doing so? And how will the city bring historical context into future proclamations and decisions made by the city council and the city manager to ensure we are not reiterating the same mistake of valuing thinly veiled authoritarian symbolism over the lives of all of our community members? So I did send a reply tonight, but first I want to comment on something that Mr. Brugge said earlier that I assume was just a flip, just like a flip of the tongue sort of thing, but I heard before we fly that flag again, we will have a community conversation around that. So I'm hoping that was just a flip of the tongue. I'm being very gracious in this interpretation that you don't intend to invite the community into a conversation and still fly the flag after that. And I also found it a little bit egregious that although it sounds like multiple flags have been flown over the last three years, that you chose to use the pride flag, which pride and policing have a long history of not going together. So I'm just, that one I'm being a little less gracious on. But my final remark specifically to your email, I appreciate that you're asking the police department to consider flying a different flag in the future, but what I had specifically stated, I would encourage the police department to identify a more appropriate means to recognize their fallen members in the future, one that actually makes a demonstrable impact. That means addressing the issues within their own community, of which suicide and on-duty recklessness are actually the biggest threat to police officers each year. And additionally, while you say it is more than disheartening that some people associated with white supremacy and anti-democratic beliefs have incorporated this flag into their protest, I would like to remind you that a not insignificant portion of those who invaded the Capitol on January 6 were police officers or associated with the police officers and military. We cannot address the ever-growing concerns for change in how our city, society criminalizes so much of daily life rather than treat the underlying problems of the change in social infrastructures by continuing to ignore that the Venn diagram of ideals of those who uphold the institution of policing and those who wanted to overthrow a democratic system are practically a circle. I thank you all, and I look forward to continuing this conversation in the future.
Thank you much for your comments, Ms. Mathwig. Appreciate it.
Erica, do we have any additional callers for Agenda Item 4.2, the public comment period?
Yes, we do have one more. We have Billy Holmas. If you do have a public comment, please press star one on your telephone keypad. We now have Mr. Billy Holmas connected. Your line is open.
Good evening. Welcome.
Yes, hi, Mayor and the city council members. I just wanted to counterpoint your previous caller, no names, just saying that I just want to praise our police officers and our law enforcement officers, and I think they're doing a great job. I hear a lot of rhetoric and, I don't know, a lot of emotion in the previous caller. I just want to reassure everybody that our police are doing the best job they can. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your call.
Any additional callers, Erica, for Agenda Item 4.2?
No, there are no other callers at this time, and no one is queued in for public comment.
Thank you.
With that, council, I will close tonight's public comment period and thank everyone who chimed in this evening. Always appreciate everybody who calls in and offers their opinions and perspective to the city council. Really appreciate it. We'll move on to Item 5 in our agenda, which is our introductory items, and Item 5.1, which is a proclamation for Public Works Week, which is May 16 through the 21st, 2021. And I will read it right now. City of Bloomington proclamation, Public Works Week, May 16 through the 21st, 2021. Whereas, public works services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. And whereas, the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public works systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets and highways, park maintenance, public buildings, solid waste collection, and snow removal. And whereas, the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services. And whereas, the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials. And whereas, the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, Tim Bussie, Mayor of the City of Bloomington, do hereby proclaim the week of May 16 through May 22, 2021, as Public Works Week in the City of Bloomington, and I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life dated this day, the 17th of May, 2021. The list of services that was mentioned in the proclamation there really does tell the story. Water, sewers, streets and highways, parks, solid waste collection, snow removal. It, our public work staff, first of all, does an outstanding job, but it's always the kind of thing that you only notice public works when they're, if they're not there. We notice if the streets aren't plowed. We notice if the water, if we turn on the tap and the water doesn't flow. And the work that they do is just, is so outstanding and is so understated. They just, they get such important work done every day in the City of Bloomington, and this proclamation really does come from the heart. We really do thank them for the work that they do because it is vital work, as I mentioned in the proclamation. It's often unrecognized, and it's not thanked enough. So thank you to our public works workers for the work that you do. Greatly appreciated, and we couldn't be the great city that we are without you. So thank you so very much. We will move on now to Item 5.2, which is an update on our Racial Equity Strategic Planning Committee. Faith Jackson, who is our racial equity coordinator, is joining us to lead us through this one, and I believe she has some special guests with her as well. Good evening, Ms. Jackson. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Bussie. I am here today joined by Heidi Walz, who is the Chief Social Responsibility Officer for the YMCA Center for Equity and Inclusion, and also the lead facilitator in the work of the Racial Equity Strategic Planning Committee. And tonight, Dr. Walz will share with this group just a little bit of an update on what's happening with the Racial Equity Strategic Planning Committee, including the process that the center is using in order to facilitate those conversations and some next steps in that process. And so at this time, I am going to turn it over to Dr. Walz to start that presentation, and then I'll pull up her presentation here on the screen.
Thank you to Mayor, Council, and to you, Ms. Jackson, for allowing me to give you an update on the work that we're doing this afternoon. Please put the PowerPoint up. I am here to represent the United Health Group Equity Innovation Center of Excellence, which is located inside of the YMCA of the North in downtown Minneapolis. Next slide, please. The United Health Group Equity Innovation Center was designed and created to ensure that we can provide opportunities for communities to thrive and engage in innovative ways to ensure that we are offering support services that are diverse, that are inclusive, and that are equitable. Next slide, please. The Equity Innovation Center of Excellence that is engineered by United Health Group has three specific set of principles that we stand by. One is creating effective strategies grounded in cultural knowledge and wisdom, creating an organizational culture that is inclusive for all, and create an organizations that are culturally agile, promoting a culture that supports equity and inclusion. Next slide, please. The work that we do, and when we're working with any organization or city, is really grounded in looking at specific ways that we can transform our communities to become more inclusive and engaged, offering welcoming opportunities for all, and ensuring that our systems that are in place are addressed in a way to create transformative ways of bringing on new challenges and new ways of providing solutions. Next slide, please. The work that we're doing with the Racial Equity Strategic Planning Committee is focused on five priorities: economic stability, education, physical health and healthcare, neighborhood and built environment issue components, and social and community context issue component. Next slide, please. The work that we're doing is creating opportunities for communities members to come together and really to begin to go deeper in understanding what are the grounding issues and concerns in relationship to the five focus areas. As we have began conversation with the community members that are engaged in this process, we have started by really getting a learning, an understanding of what each of these focus areas are doing, what is the data, what's working well, what's not working well, and then having small group discussions around the information that we have been gathering. That data is going to be utilized to really generate strategic planning processes that we will be working on collectively as a team. And the ultimate goal is to bring forth to the council an idea or ideation of prototypes that we will be developing to really look at your systems, how are they operating, what gaps and services that need to be addressed, and then what are some actionable items to include smart goals that we really need to look at in order to progress and move forward. Next slide, please. When we look at our systems, we are developing a process through what we call the human design work that we have been doing within communities to include cities. And so when we look at the City of Bloomington, it's not just quote-unquote the city, but it really is the entire city as a whole. So what are your programs and services? What is the faith community? What are your educational opportunities? What are your businesses, your for-profit and nonprofit? So this is just not a process that really focuses on quote-unquote the city, but really a holistic approach to how we can begin to engage our community members at a deeper level and then bring forth those conversations to ensure that all voices have been heard and that we are applying that work and that data to a specific set of strategies and outcomes. Next slide, please. As part of the human system design process, which we're doing, we have already started by listening to each of those five focus areas, having representatives from each area. What we will be doing next, after the next session, is really identifying how many of our community volunteers would like to work on each of the five focus areas. So there will be a small group working on each area. In that small group work, we will be developing prototypes, which are models for how to address those five focus areas. And then as we develop the strategic plan for those areas, we will be looking for input from our community as a whole. So partnering with the communication department, developing a website where our communities can engage, they can see the work that we're doing, it's very visible, and then they can provide input as needed. Next slide, please. The partner that is working with me on this project is Rashima Davis and I, we're leading the work, and then we have a large group of consultants that will be working with our small group as we begin to develop the prototypes for all of the work that we have been developing. And with that, I'd like to stop and ask, are there any questions?
Council, are there any questions of Dr. Walz? I do not see any hands going up. Thank you, Dr. Walz. Thank you much.
Thank you.
So Mayor Bussie, if there are no other questions, we'll just be back before the council sometime soon with additional updates on this work. As always, if you do have any questions outside of today's meeting, feel free to reach out to me via email or contact your committee liaison, Councilmember Carter.
Absolutely. Councilmember Carter, did you want to chime in here at all? Any offer anything? No? Thanks. Well, thank you. Thank you for your work, Dr. Walz. Thank you, Ms. Jackson, for your work on this committee, and thanks for the, thanks to the many committee members who are working on this, and they come from all sectors of the Bloomington world, of our community. They come from faith communities that it looked a lot, it looks a lot like the graphic that was laid out, from faith communities, from our business communities, from our educational systems and so on. So it's a, it's a good group doing good work. I had the pleasure of being with them at a meeting last week and am impressed with the work that they're doing currently and look forward to continuing to see the work that is going to come out of this committee work. So thanks so very much. Council, we will move on on our agenda to Item 6, which is our consent business. And Councilmember Martin has our consent agenda tonight. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you very much, Mayor. At this time, I have not been made aware of any holes, but I will put out one more call if anybody has anything they'd like to hold. All right. I guess with that, Mayor, I will move approval of Items 6.1 through 6.8.
Second, Carter.
We have a motion by Councilmember Martin, a second by Councilmember Carter to accept tonight's consent business, Item 6.1 through 6.8. Council, any questions? Hearing none? Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Holter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Item seven on our agenda are the hearings, resolutions, and ordinances. We have a number of intoxicating liquor license applications and renewals to address this evening. As I mentioned, when we adopted the agenda, we have changed, Item 7.7 will now be the renewal of on sale and Sunday on sale intoxicating liquor license, and Item 7.8 is the resolution for supportive federal funding for the Interstate 494 Vision Project. Mr. Doug Junker is with us to lead us through the- the many, as I said, liquor license applications and renewals we have before us. Mr. Junker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Our first one tonight is a new on sale liquor license for the courtyard by Marriott. We have a new group there that has purchased a hotel and has applied for an on sale liquor license. And we look for your approval. All things are checked out.
Counsel, any questions of Mr. Junker on item 7.1, the new on sale intoxicating liquor license application, courtyard by Marriott Edina Bloomington? Any questions? Hearing none. I will open the public hearing. This is a public hearing, as I said, on item 7.1, new on sale intoxicating liquor license applications courtyard by Marriott. Ms. Wilson, do we have any callers?
Erica, do we have any callers on the line that wish to speak to Agenda Item 7.1?
I know we don't have anyone who dialed in at this moment.
We have no callers, Counsel? I will look for a motion to close tonight's public hearing on item 7.1.
So move, Mark?
Second, Coulter?
We have a motion by Councilmember Martin, a second by Councilmember Coulter to close the public hearing on item 7.1. Hearing no further, Council discussion. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman? Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero to close the public hearing on item 7.1. Counsel, any questions, comments, concerns on the new on sale intoxicating liquor license at courtyard by Marriott? If there are none, I would look for action on this.
Mayor, I'm happy to make that motion.
Councilmember Martin?
Uh, Mayor, I move that we approve the on sale intoxicating liquor license for CYBE Holding LLC Doing Businesses Courtyard by Marriott Edina Bloomington.
Do we have a second?
Second, Paul.
We have a motion by Councilmember Martin, a second by Councilmember Beloga to approve the on sale intoxicating liquor license for CYBE Holding Doing Businesses Courtyard by Marriott. Hearing no further discussion. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Item 7.2, another public hearing, a new on sale intoxicating liquor license application for Mallard's Restaurant. And Mallard's, of course, very exciting, will be filling the old Red Robin space on Penn Avenue, so excited to hear that. Mr. Junker?
Correct, Mr. Mayor, yes, a space that did go vacant, but filled quickly. So Mallard's Restaurant, have a few other restaurants here in the Minnesota area, and everything, again, has looked very positive, and we're looking for your approval.
Counsel, any questions of Mr. Junker? Hearing none. This is a public hearing, and I will open the public hearing on item 7.2, which is a new on sale intoxicating liquor license application for Mallard's Restaurant. Ms. Wilson?
Erica, do we have any callers for Agenda Item 7.2, the liquor license for Mallard's Restaurant?
We didn't have anyone who dialed in for this public comment.
Thank you.
Counsel, we have no one coming forward electronically to speak at this public hearing. I would look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So move, Mark?
We have a motion by Councilmember Martin and a second by Councilmember Carter, I believe. Is that Councilmember Carter? Thank you. To close the public hearing on item 7.2, hearing no further, Council discussion. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero to close the public hearing on item 7.2. Counsel, any questions on item 7.2? Other than excitement to see that space filled again and up and operating? If there are no questions, I will look for action.
Uh, Mayor, I can swing this one as well.
Councilmember Martin?
Uh, Mayor, I move that we approve the on sale intoxicating liquor license for Mallard's Bloomington LLC Doing Businesses Mallard's Restaurant.
Second, Carter.
We have a motion by Councilmember Martin, a second by Councilmember Carter to approve the on sale intoxicating liquor license for Mallard's Bloomington LLC. Hearing no further, Council discussion on this. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Onto item 7.3, another public hearing. This for a new off sale intoxicating liquor license application for big bottle liquors. Mr. Junker?
And Mr. Mayor and Council, another longstanding license with us that's changing ownership. Kind of bittersweet to see her retire, but we have a new young owner coming in. And again, everything's checked out. We're looking for your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Junker. Counsel, any questions? Seeing none. This is a public hearing. I will open it now for the new off sale intoxicating liquor license application for big bottle liquors. Ms. Wilson?
Erica, do we have any callers for Agenda Item 7.3, liquor license for big bottle liquors?
We didn't have any callers at this time.
Thank you.
No callers coming forward? Counsel, I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 7.3.
So moved, Coulter?
Do we have a second?
Beloga, second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Coulter, a second by Councilmember Beloga to close the public hearing on item 7.3. Hearing no further, Council discussion. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero to close the public hearing on item 7.3. Counsel, any questions on this new on sale, or excuse me, off sale intoxicating liquor license application for us? Hearing none, I would look for action on this.
I can take this one, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to approve the on sale intoxicating liquor license for Just G Money LLC, doing business as Big Bottle Liquors.
We have a motion by Councilmember Coulter, a second by Councilmember Beloga to approve the on sale intoxicating liquor license for Just G Money LLC Doing Business as Big Bottle Liquors. Hearing no further, Council discussion. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. So those were the new liquor licenses, and we have a string now of renewals of our liquor license. Item 7.4 is public hearing, renewal of our off sale intoxicating liquor licenses. Mr. Junker?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. If I may, kind of big broad brush over the next few items. 7, 4, 5, 6, and 7 are renewal licenses, and the licenses you just approved are included in these renewals. Again, our licenses for these particular items, off sale wine, club and on sale, go from July 1st to June 30th. So the licenses you just approved expire June 30th, but they're now included in the next few items. So 4, 5, 6, and 7, I'm just asking that you approve these pending any outstanding items. It's not unusual every year that we're always waiting for a few insurance certificates and other documents to come in. And so the process is still moving, but we're trying to get these all ready by the June, or June 1st due date. We have to have these all up to the state. So I, we're looking for Council to approve 7, 4, 5, and 6 as presented. And on 7.7, I do have one hold that I'd like to ask. So when we get to 7.7, I do have something to add. Other than that, 4, 5, and 6 as presented.
Very good. So I'll ask Ms. Manderscheid, are we, are we able to lump items 7.4, 5, and 6 into one motion? Or should we do them individually? Ms. Manderscheid?
Mayor members, I would be comfortable grouping them all together, provided there aren't callers for any of them in which we might want to pull apart that testimony to a standalone public hearing. Perhaps Chris could check if there's any callers on the line?
Ms. Wilson?
Erica, do we have any callers on the line wishing to speak on Agenda Item 7.4, 7.5, or 7.6? Could you ask for callers or have them press star one?
We do not have any callers at this time. No one has dialed in.
Thank you.
So we don't have anyone calling. So I think if we have that approval, I think we will do that. I would like to open the public hearings right now for item 7.4, which is the renewal of off sale intoxicating liquor licenses. Item 7.5, which is a public hearing on the renewal of on sale wine licensees. Item 7.6, a public hearing, renewal of on sale and Sunday on sale club intoxicating liquor licenses. And item 7.7, which is the renewal of on sale and Sunday on sale intoxicating liquor licenses. So officially, I will open the public hearing on those items. Ms. Wilson, can we make one last check to see if there's anyone looking to speak?
Erica, one last check. Any callers now?
We still don't have anyone dialed in at this time.
Thank you.
Very good. Counsel, no one coming forward to speak on these items as we laid forward? I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on these five items.
So move, Mayor.
Second, Beloga.
We have a motion by Councilmember Loman and a second by Councilmember Beloga to close the public hearings on item 7.4, 5, 6, and 7. I believe I said there were five items. In fact, there were four items. My apologies there. Hearing no further, Council discussion. The motion to close the public hearings? Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero to close those public hearings. Now, as we move forward, item 7.7. Mr. Junker, I believe you had an issue with one of our applicants in item 7.7. Is that correct?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. So as we just approved three brand new licenses tonight, I got one brand new license on my desk today for Bloomington Hospital, or sorry, for Embassy Suites Bloomington. So in your packet, we're asking you to approve Bloomington Hospitality Manager LLC Doing Businesses Embassy Suites Bloomington. They will not be renewing. We have a new application as of this afternoon that I will be trying to get to you before the July 1 expiration date of the license at this location. So 7.7 approve as presented, with an exception for Bloomington Hospitality Manager LLC Doing Businesses Embassy Suites Bloomington.
Counsel, are we clear on that? On item 7.7, we're pulling one out as a new application is considered. If everybody's clear on that, and if there are no further questions or discussion on this item? Counsel? I would look for a motion.
So Mayor, do you want to move all four of these, or?
Yes, if we could. I believe we can move them all as a group since we did the public hearing all as a group.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry. Standby. Ms. Manderscheid?
Uh, Mayor, I'm nodding in affirmance, or if that's a word. I'm agreeing with you.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Wilson was the one who called me. Ms. Wilson?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I apologize. I did only call for speakers for 4.4, 5, and 6. So if we are on to 7, we should do a quick check.
Why don't we do a quick check then to see if there is anyone who wishes to speak on item 7.7?
Erica, this is Chris again. Have we picked up any callers wishing to speak?
Um, no, we don't have anyone dialing in at the moment.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. And I think I opened and we did close those, that item as a public hearing, so we just wanted to double check. So Councilmember Loman?
All right, then, Mayor, I'll go ahead and move the renewal of off sale intoxicating liquor licenses as stated for 7.4 in the agenda packet. I'll move the renewal of on sale wine licenses as stated in the packet for 7.5. And I'll move the renewal of on sale and Sunday on sale club intoxicating liquor licenses as stated in the packet for 7.6. And I'll also move the renewal of on sale and Sunday on sale liquor licenses for 7.7, with the exception of the Bloomington Hospitality Doing Businesses Embassy Suites as stated by the, our staff member. That works.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Loman and a second by Councilmember Beloga to accept and approve items 7.4, 7.5, 7.6, and 7.7, which are renewals of intoxicating liquor licenses. Counsel, any final discussion on this? Hearing none. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Mr. Junker. Thank you for this. Appreciate it. I know it's always a task to get these done. I know there's a lot of them that come through, and there's a lot of details and specifics in there. So well done to get this through and shepherd it through one more time. So thanks much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
As we move on to item eight, our organizational business, I believe. Ms. Wilson, can we release our operator now?
Mr. Mayor, that does conclude our public hearings for tonight. Erica, thank you for your assistance. We are all done with public comment for the evening. So you can go ahead and disconnect the line.
Thank you. You both have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you much for your help.
And Mr. Mayor, before we go on to 8.1, we do need to do 7.8, a resolution of support for 494.
Very good. Thank you so very much. Thanks for catching that for me. Item 7.8 on our agenda is a resolution of support for federal funding for the Interstate 494 Vision Project. And Mr. Shane Rudlang is here with us this evening to lead us through this. Good evening, Mr. Rudlang.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. I'll share this really short presentation on this item. So the 494 Vision Project is something that's been before the council a number of times for various actions. Tonight, what we're asking for is the council to consider approval, a res- approval resolution of support for another federal funding application. So the 494 project goes from US Highway 169 all the way through the airport, basically spans the north edge of Bloomington. Recently, MnDOT has estimated the cost for the first set of projects to be 273 million. There's about 230 million in identified funding today, which leaves the project about $43 million short. And so there are a number of ways that MnDOT is searching for money, as well as a lot of other stakeholders, and the city of Bloomington is pushing a few of those, including a number of federal vectors, community project funding through the House and congressionally directed spending, which just became available last week through the Senate, through Senator Klobuchar and through Senator T. Smith's office. And so the resolution of support supports the project and federal funding for the project, not only for this funding vector, but also for other types of funding that may become available through the federal government for 494. And so on top of that, the city is working with various other cities, counties, commissioners, commissions, and chambers of commerce, as well as the Met Council, to gather letters of support, and we would be entering in that, call it a grant application, I guess. And so what we're asking for tonight is for the city council to consider a resolution to support federal funding for the Interstate 494 Vision Project, and be happy to answer any questions on that.
Thank you, Mr. Rudlang. Counsel, any questions regarding this? Obviously, it's this 494 project we have talked about a number of times, and this is an opportunity to look for, basically to endorse and to advocate for and to look for additional federal funding. And hopefully, coming very soon, there will be additional infrastructure funding. And if that is the case, we want to make sure that we are in line to get some of the funding to help close that funding gap that we have on this project. Any comments or questions? Councilmember Beloga, I know you were the one who pushed on this previously in your work on the 494 corridor commission. Anything to add to Mr. Rudlang's comments?
Uh, I think that, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that Mr. Rudlang presented it quite well. The only additional item that I could add is that well. The only additional item that I could add is that the folks from MnDOT will be bringing to Bloomington and Richfield the municipal consent item in either late summer or early fall. So we should expect to see some more definition before then and the resolution at that time.
Thank you, Councilmember Beloga. Good to know the timing on the municipal consent on that. Counsel, anything additional to add on this topic? If not, I would look for a motion regarding Item 7.8, that resolution in support of federal funding for the Interstate 494 Vision Project.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to make that motion.
Councilmember Beloga?
Move to adopt a resolution in support of federal funding for the 494 Vision Project.
Second, Nelson?
We have a motion by Councilmember Beloga and a second by Councilmember Nelson to adopt the resolution in support of federal funding for the 494 Vision Project. Hearing no further discussion from the council? Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you much for that, Mr. Rudlang. And as always, please let us know what we can do as a council to support this in any way. I know if there are phone calls to be made or discussions to be had. I know that all members of this council, in particular, Councilmember Beloga, as I said, with his work on the 494 Corridor Commission, more than happy to jump in and help out because this is just so very important. And we're going to get one-shot at trying to find additional money at this. And I appreciate
your work so far, and I look forward to continuing it.
Thank you.
Thank you much. Moving on now to Item 8, our organizational business. I do want to make the comment upfront, our organizational business, this is basically the part of our agenda where we're into our study session, more or less. And so this is, these are informational items primarily for council discussion only. There will be other opportunities to discuss at public hearings and public settings, for example, with the Charter Amendment recommendations by the Charter Commission, certainly by the Park System Master Plan. We will have additional public input opportunities. Basically, this is the, in the case of the Charter Commission, this is our first look at that. In the case of the Park System Master Plan, it's basically our last look before we officially move this forward to, for more public input, and ultimately the public hearing that we will have on this later in the summer. So this is, as I said, our organizational business, which is our council opportunity to discuss some of these items. So with that being said, I will call Item 8.1, which is the Charter Amendment Recommendations from our Charter Commission. And Ms. Manderscheid?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor members, Denise and I met with the Charter Commission on May 6. It was their annual meeting, which occurs the first Thursday in May. We took care of some organizational business. And then we also took a look at three different recommended resolutions that ultimately the Charter Commission decided to adopt, all three of them, and move them forward to your recommendation. At a very high level, they are largely administrative in nature. Two of them relate to adding in the position of Deputy City Attorney to signing, to the class of titles that are not classified service. And the other one is to modify the available positions that could sign documents for the city. So very much housekeeping in nature. And then the third one was related to our election process, and specifically about appearing on the ballot. In the process of preparing the materials for ranked choice voting, it was discovered that we had some very specific language in our, in our city charter that wasn't as clear as we wanted it to be. And so in consultation with the Charter Commission, they're moving forward a recommendation to you for your consideration, largely generalizing the charter language to refer to the applicable statutory schedules in state law, and then continuing forward with the $50 filing fee that was already in the city charter. So that will, that will stay in the charter. That is the majority of the discussion. Again, largely just addressing organizational matters with regard to positions that didn't exist previously within our city government structure, and specifically in the city's legal department. And then, just as a preview to you, in consultation with the city clerk, we're going through the city charter and possibly updating future sections of the city charter to, again, clean up some stuff that's out of, out of sync with existing state law timing requirements. So that will likely be coming forward to you in the coming weeks and months. But what's before you tonight is the real basic procedural thing, which is to acknowledge receipt of these three resolutions from the Charter Commission, and then set the public hearing, one for each of these, for June 14. That would be my recommendation based on the statutory timelines for the various amounts of time that need to occur between these actions. The timeline that I recommend and propose is in the Request for Council Action, and that has, again, this coming before you on June 14. You do not need to vote on it that evening, although you certainly may, but you have to act before July 14 pursuant to state law. And then, again, as a reminder, that vote needs to be unanimous at the city council level. Once, if adopted and published, the earliest these charter amendments would be effective is the end of September of 2021. So with that, I'd stand for questions.
Counsel, any questions on these proposed changes brought forward by the Charter Commission? Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't actually have any questions about these proposals in particular. In particular, I guess generally speaking, you know, I have had some conversations with folks, and I'm sure others may want to or will want to in the future. I guess what I'm, it's more in the nature of a comment, but I think I would like to see perhaps in the future, some, some process if council members or even, you know, folks from the community have ideas on charter amendments, on how, I mean, I think we ran into this a little bit even with ranked choice voting, how folks make recommendations or ask questions, or how that comes forward, how that information gets brought to staff's attention and, you know, discussed for potential, you know, for potentially being put before the Charter Commission. It just, it seems a little bit unclear to me how ultimately the decision, as far as what the Charter Commission discusses, is made. So I think, I just think, generally speaking, this is not something we need to respond to tonight. Generally speaking, in the future, I'd like a little more clarity around that process. So that's all.
Mayor, I can answer that question tonight if that'd be helpful.
Sure, Ms. Manderscheid.
So the, the process that we use each year is that around the beginning of the year, I ask all the staff at the city, do they have any edits to the city charter? And they will discuss, they will discuss them internally and then make some proposals to the legal department. And then we, you know, do some research on them, try to fine-tune it, try to make sure that we're accomplishing the goals of the amendment. Because as, you know, you recall, these are substantive, substantial, constitution-like edits, and we want to make sure that we're being very thoughtful in our, in our edits. Now, there are different ways that the charter can be amended. There are various approaches that are allowed for in state law. The one that we're using this evening is what I would generally refer to as the most efficient, efficient with regard to quick. And that is that there's a recommendation from the Charter Commission that comes to the city council, you know, et cetera, the process that I just explained. There are other ways, though. The process, the recommendation, the request can come from the city council. It can also come from a citizen petition. So there are a variety of ways. There are actually about four different ways that the process can happen. So it's just a matter of, you know, if there's interest in making me or the city manager or the mayor aware of, of the, you know, you're hearing out in the public that there's an interest, and, you know, we follow up with them and help them in as much as that's possible to understand what they're going after and seeking to change, and then work through that process. But just to be assured that there are multiple ways to go about it, and we have used several of those ways within the last couple of years. The one, the way that I'm discussing tonight, though, is just one of those ways.
Thank you. And I, certainly I recall, obviously, the discussions that we've had. I think, I, we, maybe we should just talk about this offline in more detail as far as how that process moves forward. Thank you.
Counsel, any additional questions? As Ms. Manderscheid mentioned, this isn't, this isn't a discussion of the proposals here. This is basically just acknowledging the receipt of the recommendations from the Charter Commission. Then we will actually have the discussion with the public hearing on June 14. Is there anything else? If not, I believe we need, we need to make an official motion acknowledging the receipt of the resolution and setting the public hearing for June 14. Counsel, anyone?
Mr. Mayor, I will take that.
Councilmember Beloga?
Thank you. Move to acknowledge receipt of resolution numbers 2021-1-C, 2021-2-C, and 2021-3-C from the Charter Commission and setting public hearings in 14, 2021 for each recommendation from the Charter Commission.
Second, Councilmember Beloga?
We have a motion by Councilmember Beloga, second by Councilmember Loman, to acknowledge receipt of the resolutions from the Charter Commission and setting the public hearing date as June 14, 2021 on this issue. No further counsel comment? Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you much. We'll look forward to getting back into this in mid-June on this issue. Moving on to Item 8.2, which is our draft plan review of our Park System Master Plan. And Renee Clark is our Assistant Director of Parks and Projects. She's been leading us through this project and this whole process for a long while now. We've been at this and making some great progress on it, and we're getting to real nuts and bolts kind of stuff here. And so I will turn it over to Ms. Clark to
lead us through this. Ms. Clark?
Good evening, Mayor Bussie and members of council. It has been a long road, and staff and our whole project team greatly appreciate the input that council, our Parks, Arts, and Recreation Commission, and our public have provided to get us to this point in the process. Throughout the Park System Master Plan process, staff has been presenting the Park Arts and Recreation Commission and council studies and analysis, their findings and concepts for the plan. Tonight's the final study session to discuss plan concepts and recommendations with the city council for the plan. The draft plan in its entirety, then, will be posted for public review and comment in the coming days before coming back for council approval in August. Brad Aldrich is our lead consultant from Confluence, who is here tonight and will be leading the presentation. The Parks and Recreation Director, Ann Patry, is also present. We expect the presentation portion of this item to be approximately 35 minutes, with the remainder 25 minutes for council questions and feedback. In tonight's presentation, we'll introduce the Park System Master Plan overall with its four sections. We'll specifically review the main points of Section 4, which focuses on capital improvement planning. We'll provide an overview of related two priority themes, trails, and natural resources, and then review key recommendations of the Park System Master Plan, which were in your packet in their total. And I'll conclude with next steps.
Great. Thank you, Renee. Thank you, councilmembers and Mr. Mayor. As Renee mentioned, we're going to give you a little bit of a glimpse of what we've been working on for so long, and we're pretty excited to do that. It's starting to come together. And there are a couple of things that we still need to get your input on, so we will go through those as well and how they fit into the overall document. But I just wanted to start out by showing the actual-
Mr. Aldrich, can I interrupt for just a moment? First of all, welcome. Thanks for being here. Secondly, if you could adjust your microphone up a little bit closer to your mouth. Just, you're-
Yes, how's that?
Much better. Yes, thank you so much. Thanks.
Apologies for that. So the, the overall document, we're going to go look at the four main sections in the document and explore that a little bit, and then look at the cover as well, which is really inspired by the, some of the graphic design and branding that was done for the extensive community engagement that we did. And one of the chief sort of remnants from that is this little sort of bloom icon that you see in the lower left-hand corner that shows up throughout the document in a, in a number of different areas and manners. So I'm actually going to switch to the first section of the document and show you what the document's going to look like and also kind of what it entails. So this first section, I think, is a really good overview, and it really kind of focuses on some of these key elements that you're going to be seeing in the document, some of the background behind the document, the purpose and introduction, of course, why we're actually doing this plan. And throughout the document, you'll see some great photography of Bloomington itself and the park system. And we're still collecting some imagery as well, but it's really important to kind of show how great this park system is and, and how it really kind of blooms itself. So looking at the process, kind of a brief description of the process and all the things that we've been doing for the last year, and really trying to make it graphic and, you know, interesting for people to read, even if you're not a parks planner, a park planner or a parks guru. This section really shows the, the four main components of this plan. So there's four main parts. We're looking at 01, which is our city and our parks. And this is really talking about sort of the purpose and the background, looking at Bloomington, looking at the park system and the relationship between the two, and really what, how the parks make Bloomington are such an integral part of Bloomington and how they make it such a great city. Section 2 is titled "The Parks Bloomington Has," and this is really a more in-depth analysis of the park system itself. So we presented some of this information to you in the past, but really looking at some of the issues that are there and some of the opportunities that are present that we need to address. And some of those key recommendations, I know that you have in the packet, really come from this analysis, and that's where a lot of that work is found. Section 3 is really kind of taking that information and sort of laying out what we're going to do with it. So the Parks Bloomington Needs, this looks at some national trends, national standards, regional trends and standards, and this really hones in on the great community engagement that was done, and how that factors into sort of the analysis that we did and what people really want this park system to be. It's really kind of an aspirational picture of what we've heard throughout this entire process. And it's really kind of, I guess, where things start to get exciting. Section 4, How Bloomington Gets There, is about how we take that and start to implement it and make it a reality. We don't want this plan to sit on the shelf for 10 years. We want it to actually be implemented. So there are some key things that are going on in this section, and one of those we're going to talk about that, that we haven't discussed yet, and we want to get your input on, which is the CIP. And you can see this iconography of this bloom graphic coming back here as well. This is a summary of some of those key park elements. So these are really elements that we found when we did a deep dive of analysis into the park system that really make up Bloomington's parks. And there's a number of them. There's 13 of them. And we pulled out four of them that we feel are really priorities. And this is stuff that we heard from the community. This came from our analysis. This came from staff. So it's just sort of this repeating theme that really brought these out. So the first one is natural resources. I think everybody here is familiar with the great natural resources that Bloomington has and how they work in the park system. The second one is park needs and level of service. This really gets at starting to update the park system and make it a more contemporary park system with elements that people are looking for. Trails and mobility, trails always comes up- Trails always comes up as one of the top things that people need and want. And there's no, no exception here in Bloomington. That's definitely what we heard. And then equity, you know, we've had some really good discussions about equity in the past. And that is definitely one of, one of the park priority elements. So quickly, this just gives really an overview of some of the things that we've talked about with this group in the past. The vision statement, the mission statement, and looking at the guiding principles that really are going to make up sort of the recommendations. There's a discussion about the role of parks in recreation. We are really trying to set the framework here in this document that parks are a, a critical and essential public service, if you will, in the city. And they're really critical to making the quality of life so great in Bloomington. And they provide value to the city. So there's not a lengthy, lengthy discussion, but definitely touching on it to sort of set the stage for other elements in the document. And then, of course, just an overview of the great park system that you have. And then a demographic analysis, looking at the city itself and who's living here now and projecting into the future to see who will be living here and how that could potentially relate to the park system that we're creating. I know we've reviewed this with you in the past, so I'm going to kind of go quickly through it. And then, of course, we're building this Park System Master Plan on some of the great planning work that's already been done in the city over the, the last number of years. And I think hopefully you'll see where we're building upon some of those things in the future here. And some of the commissions that were really vital, Renee mentioned some of these, but definitely Park and Sustainability Commission have been doing a lot of heavy lifting and helping us out. And this last slide really talks about your city council strategic priorities. And I understand that these are from 2017 to 2020, but we really did take a look at these and incorporate them into our guiding principles, into the work that we were doing. And we feel that they sort of need, need to work in tandem and, and kind of have a synergy. So if these are changing, this is something that this document will have to do is reflect those changes in the future. So this really kind of sets the framework for a lot of the things that we are talking about in the Park System Master Plan. So I'm going to go back to, now that we've looked at the overall section, I mentioned there's some things that we definitely want to talk with you about. And one of those is the CIP framework. So we're going to quickly move through sort of the story about how we came up with our recommendations for the CIP framework and hopefully get some discussion around that. First, we're going to look at the Park System Needs and how that impacted it, the community engagement that we did, the priorities, and sort of a discussion around some different approaches. So if you recall, a while ago, we looked at this level of service, which really kind of framed out national standards and where Bloomington was doing really well and where Bloomington was kind of compared to national standards had some needs. And those are in red. And you can kind of see them. They're, they're things like dog parks and skate parks and splash pads and indoor recreation space. A lot of these things that we've been talking about over the last few months. We also did a statistically valid survey. And we really tried to get people to highlight what they wanted in the future. So this is sort of a question that really asked about future improvements and what people really wanted. So, you know, natural areas is showing up, play equipment, nature trails, trails in parks. You can kind of see these themes already start to emerge. And some actions that are most important to households, natural areas again, the indoor community recreation center. And then as a part of that statistically valid survey, there was a prioritization exercise. And again, you can see these things rise to the top, nature trails, biking paths, indoor exercise and community recreation center. Definitely some themes starting to emerge. After that, we did an extensive community engagement effort. And this is showing kind of just a graphic of all the stakeholder groups that we talked to and the online survey, you know, where we received, we received significant feedback. And some of those themes that were coming up in the word cloud to the right really reinforced what the, the level of service and the statistically valid survey we're seeing. And then we brought sort of our proposed kind of mix of these new facilities that we've been hearing to this group to see what your, your thoughts and opinions were. And this was also posted on Let's Talk Bloomington, and we received feedback from the community on these. And then I believe it was last time we really talked about sort of this approach to equity and how equity can help prioritize some of these investments, capital investments that might be needed in the future from that equity perspective. And and how that fits into kind of the CIP criteria that currently is, is out there and you're working under right now. So a lot of that racial equity work would go right into kind of the seventh category of racial equity. So all of that work that I just kind of went through really factored into this chart that the consultant us and, and staff really went into and sort of tried to lay out a priority for some of these major kind of capital improvement elements. So just kind of quickly going over this chart on the left, you have the underserved facility needs. And then we have this investment category, which is kind of just a relative cost. And then area of impact is really sort of our first guess at, we think this is going to impact. So citywide is really something that people from any part of the city is probably going to enjoy. Service area wide is really people within that service area probably will enjoy the most. Neighborhood is obviously focused on the neighbor, neighborhood, so kind of smaller scale impacts. And then we rank them according to what we thought the priority would be. So as you can see, community center, fully accessible playgrounds, natural resource management and restoration is a high priority. Neighborhood and community park plans are a high priority. And then one that we haven't talked a lot about, but this bike skilled area, pump tracks and single track is also the high priority items. So looking at kind of our benchmark study, which I know we, we discussed with you as well, looking at that CIP budget number and comparing Bloomington to other communities with similar park systems, Bloomington was definitely on the low end of annual CIP. Looking at some of these other park systems that are, you know, they're nice park systems. And I think something that Bloomington can be and aspires to be significantly less than that on an annual basis. So knowing that, knowing the sort of investment hurdles ahead of us and what needs to happen, staff and the consultant kind of came up with a couple of different approaches that we'd potentially like some feedback on. So one is this incremental approach. So looking at increasing that 1.3 million per year annual CIP budget to the three to $4 million range annually for approximately 20 years. So this is showing that that would actually just impact sort of, I don't know if you want to think about it as outdoor parks and recreation facilities, the parks themselves. It doesn't really, wouldn't really address these larger facilities like Big or, or the Aquatic Center or Dwan. The other approach would be sort of the immediate impact or a more immediate impact, if you will, which is a referendum potentially and, and asking the community about that. So this would, you know, hopefully include a lot of those same parks and recreation outdoor facilities, but also wrap in some of the, the key indoor facilities that the park system needs as well. So Renee, did you want to pause here for any questions or discussions?
Unless there's immediate feedback from the council, Brad, we protect, we could keep going and take those questions and comments at the end.
Sounds good. So this graphic is really addressing the, the incremental approach and how that might look to, to you, the council, and to maybe residents and to staff, how this might play out. So this is kind of the, if you're looking at some of the larger community parks and the, the design and construction process. So there's a lot of information on here, so I'll try to move through it. The topic of the chart here is year one. So this green bar, Park A, we're starting with kind of a, a flow chart of design here. So first would be starting with these park plans, the concept design. And that's really taking all of the information from the Park System Master Plan and looking at a specific and individual park that would be identified through our equity priority prioritization index. These would be the parks and kind of the park order in which we improve them. So concept design is really looking at taking that information and creating a couple of, of plan options and working with the community to come up with what that park is going to look like. What are the programs that are going to be in the park? How is that park going to support the surrounding neighborhood? Across all of these, you'll see community engagement and these little icons. This is really showing, I think there's going to be a lot of significant community engagement in this first phase. So just again, talking about, to the community about what's in the park, what do we want to use? How do we want to use the park? And having the community help us come to a, a final park plan. So giving them ownership over this park. The next phase is schematic design, which just takes that plan and, and, you know, provides more detail essentially. And I think there still would definitely be some areas and elements where the community could have some engagement, maybe not as robust as the concept design phase. And then again, design development is sort of the next phase, getting into more detail. And then finally, the construction documents or creating bidding documents would be that last phase. And this is typically, you know, a year process. So year two, if you're following Park A in the green, this is where construction would start and, and construction would happen. Simultaneously, or sort of in concert, Park B, the next park plan in the list, according to equity, would occur. And you would start this process that we discussed in year one all over again. And that process would continue into year three, where Park A might be wrapping up construction. Park B might be entering into construction. And you're starting a design process for Park C. So this is kind of just a general flow chart for how this would work. The number of parks and is obviously dependent on the budget that's available and also the staff resources that are available.
So I'll say that as part of the process, we discussed with council the need for community-driven park planning so that we are responding to what people want and need today and in the future. And this is what that process looks like from a practical implementation standpoint. And I'll say that preceding the year one of a project, there's the CIP planning and budgeting process and the bringing a consultant to get started, which is a few month process. So there's kind of a, a lead up to when, when this starts as well. So Brad, continue.
Thank you, Renee. So there are a couple of sort of those priority park elements that we know we haven't talked a lot with you about. So we wanted to put out some of the kind of main themes and elements and discuss those and see if you have any questions or discussion about those. And one of those is, is trails, if you'll recall. That's something that throughout the community engagement really came, was highlighted that people wanted and needed. And it's something that I know the city has been working on for a while. So kind of just an overview of what we discovered is Bloomington's trail mileage for paved and natural surface trails generally is on track with national standards, which is great, but there's definitely a need that's been expressed by the community for more. And I think a lot of those issues come in with, you know, the lacking the mountain bike facilities, not only just mountain bikes, but, but natural surface trails, so hiking and mountain biking. There are a couple of sections in the city that have what we're calling kind of blank spots, which I know engineering knows about, that the, these are elements where there's really not great bike infrastructure and that's being worked on currently. And then, of course, you have the, the major interstate burial barriers that make pedestrian and bike traffic even more difficult across the city. So this just kind of talks about comparison with, with our benchmark cities. And we're actually doing pretty well and actually very well with kind of unpaved trails compared to just the, these benchmark cities. So we talked about sort of those blank spots. And this map is, is kind of wild looking, but it's, it's from an app called Strava, which is a bike and sort of recreation and, and, and running and pedestrian app that people use for times, timing various things and, and routes. And what it does is attracts people essentially and their movement patterns and then aggregates everything over a two-year period. So the lighter, I guess, lines and squiggles that you can see over in the Highland area is really where there's a lot of people using it, and of course, along the river bottoms. And where it's darker, where it's not as prominent, is where there's not as many people biking and hiking and using this app. And you can definitely see in the center of the city, it's, it's a lot less. So I think it's a really good indicator of, you know, a number of things, but really the infrastructure that's available for people to use. So this is our Trails Issues and Opportunities map. And one of the things I wanted to highlight is just finding ways to stitch the city together. But these blue dash circles that you're seeing, these are areas where we saw in community engagement and, and also in stakeholder engagement that people identified a desire for potential natural surface trails, mountain biking and additional hiking trails. So these are things that we're going to be recommending moving forward that gets studied a little bit more closely. What should be noted here as well is in the community engagement where we did see comments about my, mountain biking trails, there was concern about, especially in the northwestern Tierney Woods and Corridor Park, there were as many people concerned about breaking up those natural areas and degrading the quality by putting more trails in those. So I think that's something that moving forward should be studied a little bit more closely. This map is really similar to the maps you've probably seen in the comp plan and in the alternative transportation plan. And that's really kind of pulling most plans forward. And really what we're saying in the park system is we fully support those. And I think those will really be great to help link the park system together. So we're kind of pulling that forward and highlighting it. But there are a few other sort of more park-focused recommendations that we're making. And highlighting a couple of those are to provide trail loops in individual parks. So these are just providing loops around parks that people go to. This is, these are the parks you go to after work and you walk your dog or you take the stroller out just close to the house where you can get out and see your neighbors. They're really important, important. And they're a pretty low-cost kind of infrastructure that would really increase both neighborhood and community park usage. And then these bike skills areas that we discussed earlier too. I think these are really on trend with what's happening in Minnesota and also nationally. But they also really, they make better bike riders. They make safer bike riders by teaching kids skills, not only just kids, but adults as well. And they're just a fun recreational component. And then I'm going to skip down to number five is signage and wayfinding. There's a lot of different things going on in the city and different sort of trail components. So having a comprehensive plan would be very valuable. And then that number six is the natural surface trail plan. I think that's something that a lot of communities are doing to sort of address some of these issues about natural resources versus mountain bike trails or whether a trail should be devoted just to mountain biking or to hiking or be multi-use. So those are kind of some key short-term recommendations just for parks. And then long-term recommendations, a lot of those are carried forward from the comp plan. The one, the other one that we noted in, in our plan and the Park System Master Plan is to really explore the Excel Energy Energy Corridor on the east side of town. There's a gap there with natural areas and also with trail usage that maybe it's not a connecting trail all the way from north to south right away. But I feel, feel like there's a lot of trail connections that could be made that could have some really positive local impacts. Another key element that we haven't talked a lot about with, with you all, but we've been talking a lot internally is natural resources. Natural resources is definitely a huge component of Bloomington parks. And it's, you know, as you saw, it's one of the highest rated things and things that people want to see. So, you know, you probably know a lot of this stuff, but there's just been a lot of work in, in, actually really good work done in the past, planning work that identified some issues and opportunities for natural resource restoration and preservation. Most recently, a couple of years ago, there was a, a study done with some priority ranking that identified over 1,400 acres with medium to high priority ranking for restoration. So I think what this plan is recommending, recommending is sort of taking those studies and bringing it all together into kind of a comprehensive package. And a lot of that has to do with natural resource management. The city is, and city staff is actually doing a really good job of providing these natural areas. But it's really decentralized and just having kind of a focus with. But it's really decentralized and just having kind of a focus with management would really be beneficial moving into the future. So, I kind of mentioned this before, but we're really just kind of layering on and building on some of the great work that's already been done. There's no need to sort of reinvent the wheel. There's been some really good inventory work done and some kind of desktop GIS-based restoration priority mapping studies done. So, one of our key recommendations, or actually a couple of our key recommendations are really to kind of centralize and bring all of this together. So, number one is really to provide dedicated staff to be really responsible for natural resources within the park maintenance division, just kind of a bit of a an organizational restructure. The staff that's currently keeping up natural resources is doing an excellent job, but they're also doing a lot of other things. Natural resources is such a big animal and important to the city as the residents have let us know that we feel it's it's definitely needs a full-time person. So, that's one recommendation that's being made. And again, that role would just be to kind of coordinate, organize and really help the team through all the departments work better around natural resource management. The second key thing would be this natural resource management plan. Bloomington is one of a few cities the size with this many, this much natural resource areas that doesn't have a natural resource management plan. And again, this wouldn't be starting from scratch. This would be building on those studies that we just talked about and really factoring in some of these things that we're discovering in the park system master plan and coming up with some great recommendations that integrate sort of the natural resource component, but also the human element as well and really helping set priorities and budgets for the future. And then, of course, increasing the budget to really prioritize natural resources. Looking at partnerships, there already are some great partnerships, but potentially some efficiencies in those. And then education and interpretation to residents is is going to be huge. And people also wanted more programming around natural resources because there's, you know, a lot of infrastructure here. And I think there's some great partners that could help the city with that, including Three Rivers. So, one of the things that we are going to talk about is in your packet was the key plan recommendations. And I have those listed out here on the left. So, these were things that we, as a consultant team and staff, really dove into the park system and explored what kind of made up the park system and what these kind of key elements really highlighted some issues and opportunities. These key plan recommendations feed into what we're calling the action plan. So, this action plan, this is the page that it's on in section four of the master plan, takes all of these things and provides recommendations for staff to actually move forward with and kind of prioritizes these actions for each of these categories. And you can see they're kind of organized. We'll go through and look at an example here. But we have these little icons that are showing up throughout the action plan. And these diamond-shaped ones are the guiding principles that the park system has. And then you'll see these other kind of pins are the city council strategic priorities. So, we're just kind of weighing what each of these actions is doing and how they're influencing each of these priorities. So, I am going to pull this over and show you section four. Section four is kind of the how we get there section. So, we kind of talked about what was in that capital improvement plan. The other key elements in this this section are park classifications. So, how we classify parks is how we design them and how we maintain them. So, that's going to transform the parks over time. And then we're also showing this evolution of a typical park. So, showing a typical neighborhood park and taking it and taking all the recommendations and all the things that people want to see and showing how it can turn into this sort of new type of park. And then the action plan is what I just described to you. So, I'm just going to kind of run through that, it's kind of our last thing, and show you how that's all coming together. So, these four key ones are are first. And these natural, this is natural resources and there's sort of a hierarchy here, priority, if you will, of these actions that staff can use as kind of on a yearly basis to go through and structure their work plans. I'll go through them kind of quickly here. Level of service again is kind of modernizing the park system and getting it up to date. So, some of these key facilities, trails and mobility, some of these key trail issues. And then equity and access, we've talked a lot about. Adding core services to expand user groups is just bringing more programs into the city to serve more residents. And organizational structure, we talked a little bit about some of those key components, such as kind of realigning the natural resources position within the parks maintenance division. And a lot of this is how parks, parks, the parks department and parks maintenance, maintenance work together, which there's been a lot of really great discussion about that moving forward. Economic development and budget enhancement. So, finding, you know, capital improvement sources and looking at ways to be a bit more efficient. Updating the policies to give the parks department a little bit more flexibility, control over their work. This really kind of deals with partnerships as well, kind of with the school district, with Three Rivers and with other agencies. And then, yeah, efficiency and effectiveness is really focused on helping the department become more streamlined and prove their value to the city council on an annual basis. And then lastly is sustainability and resilience. And we broke sustainability and resilience, pardon, from natural resources for a couple of reasons. One, I think natural resources was such a strong recommendation from the from the residents that we wanted to pull it out and really highlighted its importance and kind of pull these elements from sustainability into focus that might not be necessarily natural resource related. So, if we are talking about doing park building facilities, what are sort of the benchmarks that we should be looking at for those? And how can we kind of improve the park system through mowing, through integrated pest management, through all these other things that they definitely have an impact on natural resources, but they're not totally focused on natural resources? And that is all we have for you tonight. Have any questions?
Actually, Brad, if you want to
You're right, yes, yes, sorry.
Back to the presentation, I'll just review next steps before we get into discussion. So, tonight we reviewed sort of the last major components of the plan with you. And we are about to present these full chapters to the public using Let's Talk Bloomington as the primary way to do that. Staff will be posting them in total as well as summaries with short presentations to help folks review. I'm currently working with staff in coed and our communication staff in Parks and Rec to get that work posted. We're hoping to have that ready for review, May twenty-fourth, a week from today, and having a four-week window for that review. During that time, also, staff will be reviewing and creating our comments on that, on those draft sections. The Park and Sustainability Commission will be reviewing. Also, towards the end of that time, as the mayor mentioned, we will bring a public hearing before council. So, public that don't want to or in addition to leaving comments at Let's Talk Bloomington or with staff directly can also have the opportunity to provide any comments directly to council. Staff will compile those comments and finalize the draft the last part of or the month of July and then bring the final plan for approval to council on August second. That public hearing I mentioned isn't scheduled yet. And this plan and process for finalization is a draft and has been a bit of a moving target over the last couple of weeks as we are as staff compiling these documents and preparing what we need for posting for review. So, that is what the the plan looks like to get the, bring this to the public and to council for final approval. With that, Brad and I will both stand for questions and thank you very much, Brad, for the great presentation.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for the the great presentation and the great work that has gone into this. Very in-depth, very very insightful and graphically wonderful. And I think the the photography is fantastic. I'm not sure if those were all existing or if you guys went out and got a lot of that photography, but it's outstanding. So, well done there. The council, if you have questions, I'd be happy to take questions and comments on this. The the kind of overarching comment that I have, just in looking at this and reading through it, I appreciate the specifics related to 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 parks, to natural resources, to trails and so on. But I think the most important part of the work that you've done so far and that I'm seeing in this in this document are the real nuts and bolts kind of stuff that that you've put together. The the discussion about organizational structure, about budgeting, the updating of policies, the the efficiency and effectiveness. Basically, that's it's the, you know, you can you can derive it and say it's the bureaucracy around it. But what it is, is basically the structure and the foundation about how this isn't just a one-time kind of thing and and we make the big splash with the trails or something. This is basically building it from the ground up, which I think does, you know, for, we we have outstanding parks here in Bloomington and have for a number of years, but that type of foundation I don't think has been there. Or if it has been there, it it needs to be updated. And appreciate the work that has gone into this and to to see that level of detail and information on those seemingly mundane type of topics when you're talking about parks and you're talking about nature and the great outdoors and so on. But the very core of it is this information that that you've put together. I mean, bottom line, what gets measured gets done. And to to look at these, to look at the metrics and to look at the budgeting and to look at the the expectations. I think there was a reference about effort-based, how the department was more effort-based and outcome-based and which I totally understand in terms of how it was put together in the past, the the effort, the work, the the hard work that goes into it as opposed to the outcomes. What do we really hope to accomplish through that hard work? So, I, as I said, I'm I'm impressed with this and I'm impressed with the structure of it, impressed with the the detail of the document and look forward to hearing additional comments from the council. Look forward to having it out within the the community and having them take a look at it and seeing the 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 larger picture of all that we're trying to accomplish through this. So, hats off, well done. I think this was, this is is an outstanding work product right now.
Thank you, Mayor.
Council, any questions, comments on this? Councilmember Loman.
Thank you, Mayor. I couldn't say it more eloquently than you did, Mayor, so I'm not going to even try in terms of that. But yeah, this is a fascinating document and I'm really impressed with how you're able to weave in, you know, just a number of things, especially the the, you know, the outreach components of it and our our principles and just so much, so many more items. And I also wanted to just thank you know, our staff for their work with sustainability. I know we've got a little more work to do. Want to thank staff's willingness to meet even today with our chair. I know we've got some more time out for that, so I'm going to leave my comments about that until that specific period of time. Certainly have some questions about that and I'm looking forward to that dialogue around that. But it sounds like that over the next twenty years, that I just want to be sure that I got this right, that we're looking to invest anywhere from sixty million to eighty million dollars within the park system or more. Is that my understanding in terms of what was presented today and which is within the plan?
I I don't know that they had a specific dollar amount in there. I know that they talked about directing funds or specifying funds from the capital improvement plan and then laid out the the incremental approach as opposed to the the immediate approach of of a possible referendum and so on. Ms. Clark, am I, was I hearing that correctly?
Mayor, members of council, councilmember Loman, yes, we did not provide a dollar amount investment over time. That type of detail is provided annually in in our CIP, which staff are working on. And council will see it that way. What we've provided were priorities and an annual capital improvement spending amount, which has been also contemplated in the CIP through charter bonds and is actually pretty consistent with what staff has proposed this year in twenty twenty-one for that incremental approach. The other approach that hasn't had really much discussion with council yet and could in the future is a referendum to look at more immediate, you know, wide-ranging impact across the park system.
I just want to thank you for that that clarification. Sometimes when folks hear the word CIP or, you know, this, you know, that immediately means, well, that's what we're looking to invest over that period of time. And I wanted to thank us, you know, for for clarifying that for for myself and also for the broader public who's not used to working with a CIP document like we are with council. So, then let me, I just got a couple more questions and I'll turn over then to my other colleagues. So, very excited about this this proposal. But what I wanted to know is how will we know that we've improved the experience for our our customers when they go to the park? So, for example, we have, just to be a little more more specific, we've got one on page eighty-six of our packet where we talk about the level of service. And then we have a goal there where it says to achieve an appropriate balance of parks, recreations, facilities, programs and experiences in each planning area where land use patterns are allowed to support equitable access of park, trails, sports, facilities and recreational amenities. And then kind of below there, there's a number of, you know, things that are really specific. But now, if I'm somebody who's just coming along and I see that that level of service, how how will I know, you know, how will I really know? What could I put my finger on to kind of say, okay, today in twenty twenty-one, May, here's how it was? And then, you know, three, four, five years from now, how will I know that I've gotten, you know, an improvement in terms of our level of service, just for example?
Mayor, councilmember Loman, members of council, there's a couple of measures. One is doing quantitative measures in in surveying and one is qualitative measures in surveying. Quantitatively, we can track the investments we've made based on community-driven park planning in those investments. And say we've built X number of miles of trail, improved X number of parks and X number of facilities. And then also, you know, parks are built to provide experiences and programming for our residents. And one of the things, one way that we are looking at doing that specifically through programming, we talked about in our recreation and program assessment, our business plans for all that programming work we do and at our facilities, that would include more qualitative measures from our customers on those experiences in their programming. More generally, resident surveys about park experiences similar to the surveys we've done as part of this process also could provide feedback for us to consider during this, you know, ongoing improvement process of our park system. But those are some ways that we would measure, opportunities to measure that improvement.
Yeah, I appreciate that, you know, that we've got some measuring that we've got going on now. And I I I hope that we'll be able to not only do those measures, but be able to communicate what we've done. One of the things that, one of the institutions I used to belong to, we were militantly modest about what we did. And so, matter that we made these accomplishments, we had these great plans, we actually executed, got it done. I just want to be sure that we're able to communicate that, get that out, make sure people know. And that really kind of leads to kind of my next question, which is maybe more of a comment, is that as we are doing those measures, both qualitatively and quantitatively, and then communicating that out to the broader public, which I I know I I don't think that we we won't. I'm sure that we will do when you guys get to that. As we look to at the comparisons between our peer cities and how we make progress amongst those, I hope that we'll also keep that in mind, too, as we see what other amongst those, I hope that we'll also keep that in mind too, as we see what other cities are doing around us, that we're able to, I don't necessarily compare and contrast, but have a good understanding of, you know, kind of where we fit within those, you know, and then other cities around the, around the city. I just look at Bloomington as always been, in terms of parks and recreation, as always being the leader and looking forward to us, you know, kind of capturing that as we move forward. And I, I'm looking forward to this plan really kind of doing that. So thank you again for all your hard work and the hard work that's to come. Thank you much, guys.
Thank you very much, councilmember Lohman.
See, councilmember Carter and then councilmember Beloga. Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just want to first start by saying thank you to Renee and Anne and Brad. This is really incredible work and I am very excited, like the mayor and the rest of my colleagues on council here, I'm sure. And so, you know, I guess, just a couple of comments and then I have one question. First, you know, we hear over and over again that parks and rec and trails and natural resources is one of the things that people love most about living in Bloomington. And, but, you know, like you laid out very clearly in the report and the analysis, we have a lot of outdated infrastructure and we have a lot of gaps in our system. And so I just really appreciate how you painted a very clear and concise vision based on all of the community engagement and community input that you got. And it's also very clear that you incorporated our strategic priorities and our values and all of the feedback that we've given you along the way. Even in specific words I see in the report, I can tell that you've really been listening, not just to council, but to our commissions and to residents. And so I just really, really appreciate that. And, and then like the mayor said, I'm really excited to see very tangible action steps laid out very clearly. And so my, my question, and you may have said this and I missed it as I was continuing to skim through the packet again, for the ongoing or the next steps in public engagement, will you be visiting some of the stakeholder groups that have been created by the coed teams, so like the BIPOC leader groups? I know they had a group of seniors that met toward the beginning of the pandemic. I'm just curious if you'll be visiting kind of some of those really more specific stakeholder groups.
Mayor, can councilmember Carter, members of council, on Friday I have begun discussing, I guess I said, with coed, talking with some specific groups. The Latino Leaders Group is one specific group that I provided an engagement opportunity to with the help of their group. We provided it in Spanish and Amanda Crombie, our liaison, is going to help us connect to follow up with that group again. We will discuss opportunities. I'll learn from Amanda what other opportunities with groups that they meet with regularly that we could connect and I thank you for bringing that up for us.
Well, again, thank you. Thank you for all of the hard work that has gone into this and I don't have any other questions right now, so I will, I will end my comments there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Beloga.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I want to add my perspective and thanks to you. To start with, about 15 years ago, when the last Parks Master Plan was generated, I was a part of that team that was putting it together. You have shown truly what a good Parks Master Plan should look like. And if anyone else out there is listening who participated in that plan, the creation of it is listening, I think they would agree also. So great job, just, just a great job. One of the things that, going back to councilmember Lohman's measurements comment and I heard all that you said, and you don't need to respond, it's just for your consideration. One of the things that I believe in parks is, is usage is the measurement of a desirable park and its amenities. If we can measure the usage today and measure the usage ongoing and into the future, to me, that is the most telling method of determining whether we have created something successful or not. So again, don't need to respond, but ask you that you think about that and if appropriate, incorporate it into the measurement tools. Lastly, and going back to the mayor's comments very early in the meeting about the changing environment that we are, I know that when this plan was put together, that is up on the screen for next steps. Let's Talk Bloomington was really about the only vehicle that we had to safely gather a lot of data and information and comments back from our, the general public. And today, that's evolving and quickly evolving. And I think there's a number of, a great number of our community who don't really feel good about using some of the electronic tools. I'm not, you know, Let's Talk Bloomington is a great tool, but they really want to sort of press the flesh and look eyeball to eyeball and talk to that person and say, here's really what I think. And since we're looking, you know, we've got some time, consider a group opportunity to get input from around the city. And again, no need for response, just one councilmember's comments to that effect. And again, thank you for your good work and great plan.
Thank you very much, councilmember Beloga, and we will consider those recommendations.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and I'll echo the thanks from my colleagues and yourself. And I think it's an outstanding plan. I just have a couple of quick, probably nuances and questions on it. I was looking at the map where it outlined the numerous parks throughout the community and maybe I missed it, but I was just wondering, there seemed to be a couple of outside entities that were located, the Three Rivers Park District locations at Highland, obviously the golf course that we recently entered into a relationship with, but still own. But I'm not sure that all of the public school amenities were there, some of the National Wildlife Reserve locations, obviously the large one on the east side, but the old Cedar Bridge, Lyndale Boat Launch, all of that type of stuff. And then I'm also wondering about any private recreational park type amenities, if they were on there. I just want to make sure that, that we don't just look at the city providing for the needs of the residents and the larger community in terms of providing amenities, but that the plan looks to how we could provide those in partnership with other organizations. And I guess if there's a question at all there, how is that, those types of partnerships and relationships integrated into the plan?
Councilmember, or Mayor, councilmember Nelson and members of council, we have a recommendation in the plan that we explore our partnership agreements and look to do just that, to provide enhanced opportunities through partnership. I don't know that there's any more specific details than that. Brad, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, Renee, yeah, thank you. Great question. Councilmember Nelson, you're right, that, that map is showing just sort of the city Parks Department-controlled or controlled-operated facilities and the, where they're the implementing agencies for some of the regional parks. We do in, in other sort of analyses and maps, if you'll recall, we did a study on playgrounds. So we looked at school facilities that had playgrounds and kind of the walking times to those and factored those in, in, in some of those instances. And also in the level of service study that we did, we did incorporate other agencies into those. So, you know, the softball fields at the schools is one that is coming to mind, that is definitely factored in. The Three Rivers acreage is located in that and some of the U.S. Fish and Wildlife acreage is factored into that as well. So it does show up in various places, but you're correct, it's not, it wasn't in that map that we showed.
Well, thank you. I very much appreciate it. I just wanted to highlight that I think that those types of partnerships are a key opportunity for us, for funding sources, as well as, you know, accelerating the build-out of what we see as this vision on there. The last thing that I wanted to point out, and when I looked through this, I just wanted to thank you because I know there was some talk about economic development, how to take a look at sponsorship, advertising, how to generate other revenue sources to help cover the costs of these in a way that really makes sense, in my opinion, for the community. And I just wanted to thank you for taking a look at those opportunities, looking at how you might most effectively do that so that our local businesses can get their brand out there, that they can encourage people to come patronize their business and to help us build a better park system going forward. So it's, it's not just on the back of property taxes or other governmental funding sources. So I, I thought that was great and just wanted to say thank you for including that.
Thank you, councilmember Nelson.
Counsel, anything additional to add? I don't believe I'm seeing any new hands go up right now. So I think we will say once again, to all the folks involved in this, thank you. Thanks for the product so far. It looks fantastic and looking forward to hearing the community's response to this and hearing their input. I would concur with councilmember Beloga, if the opportunity arises to do face-to-face meetings in a, maybe in a park, there's an idea, a big open area where you can get people involved and bring them together and get some feedback. I think it, it would be a worthwhile opportunity for folks to do that. So I applaud you. Well done. Ms. Catry, I see you popped in here. Did you have anything to add as we, as we wrap this up tonight?
Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much. I just wanted to say thank you so much for the many hours that you've given us over the past year, year and a half, as we have worked our way through this project. It has been enlightening, eye-opening. It's been a great experience for our staff. It's been a great opportunity for us to engage very significantly, members of the community and continue to develop those relationships. So we're just really excited about the future. We're very excited about the plan. It was fun to hear your comments. Mayor, it was especially fun to hear your comments because quite honestly, those are some of the nuts and bolts that sometimes people don't appreciate it as much as staff does. And those are some of the things that we are as excited about to improve our operations, improve our efficiency and improve the service that we're providing to the residents of Bloomington. So thank you so much for your feedback. I want to thank Brad publicly. He and his team have done just an amazing job on this plan and, and we couldn't be happier to be partnering with Brad and the Confluence team. So thanks again for your time this evening. We really appreciate it.
And thank you. Thank you for your leadership on this. Appreciate it. And yes, Brad, you and your entire team, please pass our thanks along to them for the work, to do this work, especially as the world has been over the past 15 months or so, is pretty darn impressive. So well done. Thank you much for that.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else, counsel? Very good. We will move on. We will move on to item 8.3, which is our legislative update. We will welcome back Mr. Shane Rudling to give us our, the legislative update. I think councilmember Coulter could pop in too with any insights he might have. I'm sure you know that they actually did adjourn today, or have they adjourned or are they officially still in? I'm not even sure. They are adjourned, officially adjourned with work unfinished. And so, Mr. Rudling, welcome back.
You, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I'll share a short presentation on this item as well. The legislature did adjourn today. They are done for the time being anyway. So what happened today was they did reach a budget deal, which I won't go through each of the bullet points there. But it sets targets and sets some parameters around which the conference committee can do all their funding and policy work. And what they're targeting right now is a special session no later than June 14. That's kind of the date people are talking about, but you hear it talked about in the context of they need to get back together before June 14 because that's when the governor's emergency powers would need to be renewed, should he do that. And so people are kind of circling that date and there's a few other dates floating around as interim milestones for people to do their work so that they can, they can get done by June 14 and pass what they need to pass, whatever it is they finally decide to pass. And that all needs to happen before June 30 on the budget side, otherwise there would be a Minnesota government shutdown. And so everybody's, you know, very cognizant of the day on June 30. It's important to note that there are still a number of things that are not decided. While they did literally ink a deal, it looks like this, on budget targets and some specific dollars in policy provisions, there's a number of things that they have yet to decide on. In particular, governor's executive orders, which are, cover a number of topics, including the eviction moratorium. And so that, that is still a thing. So there's lots of work to do, including, you know, all of the Bloomington active items from our legislative policy and a number of items that we were working on from a defensive standpoint. So on the active list, lists our two TIP districts and the fire station sale tax exemption. On the defense side, the PUD in housing, omnibus bill on the Senate side, PUD restrictions and chip funding and the health and human services bills look to be cut and we're working against that. And then there's hospitality legislation, which is another item that the chamber is largely leading. And all of those items hang in the balance of the final deal. And so they each have their own story and there's another, you know, dozen or so items that various people at the city are working on with their various stakeholder groups and so on, which we can try to answer questions if the council does have any questions on those specifically. But so, May 17 is here. It's done. They did come to sort of deal. There's a lot of work to do over the next month for them to sign various bills, tax bill and others. With that, be happy to answer questions if I can.
Counsel, any questions? Looking at the piece of paper, pieces of paper that they, that is the deal and have been signed off on, I'd ask either Mr. Rudling or even councilmember Coulter, what are the chances that this deal lasts for a month? Before they can get back to actually finalize, ratify it, put it into law?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I'll give my two cents for whatever that's worth. Maybe it's two cents. The good news is I think they've set some interim dates to really try to keep the process moving over the next month. You know, these deals and the provisions outside of these deals are probably what's going to play the most into how this all works out. You know, eviction moratorium, you know, all the policy decisions and the various conference committees are very important. And so, you know, this deal could fall apart again, but it's good. There is a, literally a signed deal sitting here in front of us that at least has the parameters of what the end of 2022, 2021, excuse me, session could look like.
I appreciate your optimism, Mr. Rudling. Mr. Verbrugge, anything to add?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I don't know that I can do any better than that. I think I share your level of optimism, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, any questions? Mr. Rudling? I thought you were raising your hand. I'm sorry. I apologize. Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. Not to, I don't have any questions, obviously, because as you mentioned, this is what I do for my day job. Um, I I think you are, you know, for what it's worth, I I think you are right to be skeptical of of this deal holding out for another month. Um, I will say, based on my own experience, the the actual budget targets, the actual spending targets were never the particularly, I think, challenging items of the session. Uh, as I recall, the initial overall targets were not particularly far apart. Um, it's going to come down to all the the policy discussions and and everything else that's going in on this bill, on the bills. Um, I will say that in a part of the agreement that was announced today was um, and I I chain glossed over it a little bit because it wasn't super applicable to city work, but the um three agreements related to uh state tax deductions for PPP loans and unemployment benefits. Um, and so that that means there will be a tax bill. Um, there does not have to be a tax bill, but that being part of the agreement means there will be. Um, you know, how much more of it, you know, how much more there is beyond that? I, you know, I suppose is up for discussion, but um, you know, I I think that's that's good news for our our provisions that would need to go through a tax bill. Um, you know, beyond that, I I think, you know, as Shane said, I I think the sort of the the dates between now and June 14th or some uh 14th, yeah. Um, I, my hope is that 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 will create some accountability. I I would add that if they aren't able to get to an agreement by the 14th, then then the only other way they come back is if the governor calls another special session. Um, and I I would be willing to bet that the legislature would not want to put all of it in the governor's hands that way.
Thanks for your insight. Very good. If there's no further discussion on our legislative update, then we will move on to item eight point four on our agenda, which is our city council policy and issue update. Mr. Verbrugge.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I have nothing this evening. Uh, I would like to check in with Chris Wilson just to make sure there isn't anything from uh staff over the past couple of days while I've been away.
Ms. Wilson.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I don't have anything additional to add.
Very good. Counsel, anything to bring forward for item eight point four, our council policy and issue update? Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just a a quick note of thanks. Um, I heard a report that I forget when it was exactly sometime over the last week. Um, but someone was, I believe, golfing at Highland Greens uh and collapsed. And uh, Bloomington Police, Bloomington Fire and Alina EMTs uh showed up on the scene very, very quickly and were fortunately able uh to save this individual and he is recovering. Uh, but I I wanted to just put out a quick note of thanks to uh our Bloomington Police Officers, uh firefighters and and the Alina EMTs. By all accounts, it was an impressive show um that that moved seamlessly and and obviously resulted in a in a life saved. And I I think that's just really, really incredible work and and just wanted to recognize the folks responsible for that.
Agreed. Agreed. Is there anything else? Councilmember Lohman, you're off my screen right now. Your name is, I can't see if your hand is up or not.
Yep, I put my
There you are. I see it now. I see it now. It's tricky. You know, only so many names fit on the screen and sometimes you roll off. I apologize. Councilmember Lohman.
It only fits so much in there. Well, I uh had promised uh a couple of uh weeks ago that I would uh uh respond to a a uh resident. Uh, I will not use their name because I think they didn't want that uh used. Um, uh, there was a statement, uh, actually, Mayor, that you made that I support. And uh, uh, you know, basically, I want to comment on that, uh, just so we we talk about being transparent. So um, rather than writing it out, I want to just be sure that uh everybody hears it since my comments were made I at the at the public meeting. Uh, but uh, you know, um, uh, one council member challenged me about the tone of of the comments and and I you know, frankly, I uh, uh, you know, I think we've got to have some humility and I also understand, you know, where the mayor is coming from. Um, and we've got differing points of view on 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 that and that's and that's fine. Um, but I think it's uh, it it's important. The mayor uh brought forward uh comments that things need to be accurate as as accurate as possible when we're talking about the city's business. And then uh I think we as a council, um, I think always strive to do that, to try to make sure that we have a number of folks who have uh differing points of view and differing points of view. Um, as before, I have uh defended those different points of view in the past. Uh, so what I would say, I'll I'll, I continue to support the mayor's statement. Um, I know this is a tough job. Uh, we need to have humility um as as we do this type of work. And uh, again, I thank the mayor. I also think the the council and also thank our residents who uh who comment. And uh when they get upset about things and they want to comment to us, I think it's important that we listen to what they have to say. Um, um, but we we also need to be be accurate and I will certainly uh make every effort that I can be to be careful with my tone in terms of what I say. Um, but uh, uh, I I support what you had to say, Mayor, a number of uh, uh, and I'm not backing off of that. Um, so thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilmember Lohman. Counsel, anything else? Last call? I do not see any hands coming up, so counsel, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move, Coulter.
Second, Councilmember Loh.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn this evening's meeting. There is no further council discussion. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you, Beloga.
Hi.
Carter.
Hi.
Coulter.
Hi.
Lohman.
Hi.
Martin.
Hi.
Nelson.
Hi.
Mayor Bussie.
Hi. Motion carries seven zero. We are adjourned for this evening. Thank you all very much. Thanks to the staff for your work tonight. Thanks for everybody who's tuned in and who participated. Enjoy the beautiful weather. Let's hope it lasts. Hope to see you all again in person very soon. Thanks.